Dear Warren Heights Parks and Recreation Master Plan Public Hearing, I definitely appreciate everybody's attendance and hopefully that we'll get lots of good input tonight for our city and our recreation facilities and our parks. I just like to let you know, we are recording this so others can look at it later and see what was discussed. And hopefully add things that they have wanted to see in the city. So with that, all that being said, this isn't the last time that we will be able to take input, just so you know, we will be accepting written comments within the next week and a half. And we definitely will incorporate those into the plan that we're going to be submitting to the DNR in late January. So I'd like to remind everybody to please raise your hand to speak. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Rick from Police and Vanderbrink, who is the company that is helping us put together the master plan. And he is going to take us through a small presentation. And definitely at that point, at some point, we'll open it up for your comments and any additions or things that you might want to see in our master plan. So Rick, do you want to take over?
Sure. Well, as Kim had said, we've just got a kind of a short presentation to talk about some of the, what the purpose of the five year recreation plan is, what is a prerequisite for as far as potential grant funding? And then getting into just some of the projects and the various parks that are currently on the improvement list. And then just to briefly go over year one and through year five capital improvement schedule. And just talk about, you know, what some priorities need to be shifted around, if there are additional projects that may want to be added. But again, just to go through the very, the very basics, if you will. The new draft is, I think, been linked to the city, the website that is trying to direct more people to it. So that, that link is still active. And we're also waiting to get some updated community survey data that may have one or two projects identified that are not yet identified, but we hope to delve into that. And within that, as Kim said, the next week or 10 days timeframe to solicit additional comment. With being said, let me pull up. Is that PowerPoint, five year Parks and Recreation Plan 22 to 2026 up on everybody's screen? Okay. Again, the purpose of the plan is to create an inventory of existing facilities, resources, identify community recreation and open space needs, and set a plan of action for the next five year period. Once this plan is on file with the DNR, also there is the ability to do yearly amendments. If something, a target of opportunity comes up. But the plan itself is good for a five year period. And at that end of the five year period in 2026, 27, you will basically have to do this process again. They do not allow amendments after the five year period. So you're basically beginning, beginning the process over. The key prerequisite for this is really the, the DNR provides a couple of fairly substantial grant programs for park and recreation development. And to be eligible for those grant programs, you either, for especially Atlanta Water Conservation and the Natural Resources Trust Fund, this plan is a requirement. The other program which the DNR funds quite a few park and recreation projects is the Michigan Passport Grants Program. And although that doesn't require a five year recreation plan, it does require that you have a capital improvements plan submitted with with the grant application for the passport. But this plan does dual duty because since it does contain CIP in the, in the last section. So it, it kind of helps you with all those programs. And really that's how really many communities are able to get park and recreation projects funded is utilizing those programs. The other aspect of the CIP would be if you're looking at like community development block grant funding, many times those programs also have some type of CIP requirement that they're trying to see that you designated the projects in some type of public process. So again, this plan will serve you in many different ways. And it's also important because again, you know, leisure time in America is, is, is a real big activity. And really as much as we can promote recreation and physical activities to any community, it's just an amazing health benefits, especially when, you know, everyone's trying to, you know, get, get that target of 44, 45 minutes of physical activity in a day, which is very challenging. You know, park and recreation facilities can really, really serve as an important part to any community. The planned content, and again, the, the draft plan is formatted. And this is again, I always tell communities that the DNR checklist for plant, plan approval is set up in these categories. And then that's why we format it in exactly this order and exactly those categories. You know, the first is community description, which has a lot of basic, you know, demographic information in it as well as some natural resources information. The key component in the community description really is what is your, I guess there's three parts. What's the general population, which from the census data, the city of Warren has had a fairly significant bump in the last 10 years. I think it increased nearly 7,000 residents in that period of time between the censuses. The other thing that's important is the median income level of the community. Because again, when it comes to grant scoring, there is, there are additional points for low to moderate communities and kind of the communities in the middle of the median income level. And the city of Warren Heights is kind of right in that middle category. So you would, you would qualify for some type of grant points based on your median income. The other part in the community description, which is, is also relevant to park and recreation is the percentage of people with disabilities in a community. And you just, you have to think, when you start looking at recreational development, the importance of universal access and what it means to the percentage of the population of a community. And I believe the, the, the percentage of people in the city as of this last census is pretty close to about 15% of the general population has some type of physical disability, whether it be visual, whether it be mobility, whether it be sensory. So again, it's just something to keep in mind and keep, keep on your radar as you start looking at projects is really the big emphasis is looking at how do we redevelop park projects with universal accessibility in mind. The second section is administrative structure, which just talks about the decision-making process. The third section, description of the planning process, which talks about the community surveys, the two workshops that were scheduled in this, this public hearing as well as what type of input was gathered to really help formulate the plan. The recreational inventory, not only inventories, the city's park and recreation facilities, but does a little bit of an overview on county facilities that may be within about 30 minutes drive. And again, it's, it's not a hard and fast rule. But I think it's more of be mindful when you look at projects that you're not duplicating facilities. So again, it's just kind of a way to back check when you start looking at projects. In the last section, which we'll spend most of this conversation on tonight is the action program, the capital improvement schedule and some of the rationale. That's the real meat of, of any plan. And this plan was basically kind of building off the old plan. There was a little bit of a lull where a lot, a lot of those projects were still valid. So we, keeping that as a starting point, and we've added additional projects to kind of help flesh that out. As far as the input, again, we've, we've had a couple of sessions with the community survey that was out. It was out originally in May, had a low turnout. So we talked between Kim and myself about putting it back out. And so it was out in, in October, November. We're waiting for some more final results to come in on that. We did advertise two public workshops on the 15th and the 30th, as well as this meeting tonight. And with the ultimate goal of bringing this back in a completed form based on any other input that we get in, in January, so it can be submitted to the DNR by February 1st. In the recreation plan itself, there, there are a park specific actions identified with each of the parks. And there were also some broad, general, just overall recreational thoughts, if you will, on what need to be kind of focused on is the community moves through this plan. Just like to take a minute and so the, you know, all the parks are identified. The first one on this list, and then again, it's not in really any priority or alphabetical order, but Parkland Park was listed, there was some discussions and also some carryovers from the previous plan about redesign the sled hill, an additional lighting to improve winter use, installing a heating unit to the concession stand. Again, for, to help get a four season component going in the park. Also paving some of the parking lot areas and driveways again to improve maintenance and accessibility. Sand volleyball courts, some soccer field improvements, frisbee golf. And also there was some discussion on could this be a potential home for potential bark park, dog park? So that was kind of on the targeted list for Parkland Park. Central Park, Canfield Community Center and Canfield Ice Arena was some of the long term. Even from the last plan was discussion on potentially upgrading and replacing the current recreation center there. Also identifying opportunities for new ADA play structures, paved walkways, some softball cages, you know, constructing a walking trail. And again, also potentially replacing some of the parking lot areas in that one as well. And it's also, you know, looking at some of the parking lots probably need some further evaluation. As Kim and I talked about, there's, there's repaving of and resurfacing of parking lots. And there's reconstruction of parking lots. So again, I think that needs a little more going forward discussion on can some of the items, the parking lots be repaved? Or are they, are they getting close to where they're reaching the end of their life cycle? And have to be a little bit more substantial reconstruction. Also, there's also some new things as far as stormwater management and some green technologies and how to basically capture some of that stormwater and take some pressure off the community stormwater system. As we're all well aware that this last, last summer, there were some pretty significant rains across Southeast Michigan. And so that might be an opportunity to help combat and, you know, help ease some of that burden on the existing infrastructure system by incorporating some stormwater management in new projects. Van Houten Park, there is again, resurfaced parking area. And again, with the potential of porous paving and, and rain gardens. The, the existing splash pad is getting to the point where it is probably going to need some type of resurfacing and potentially with some safety materials in the, in the next few years. Also looking at the conversion of some of the existing uses like the ball field again to another possible bark park location. And again, just some ADA upgrades on some of the playground structures. And really making sure that those are up to current safety standards. And on also, one of the big things that we're seeing, and especially in Southeast Michigan, is evaluation of having some outdoor exercise kind of fitness zones that could be worked into the park as well. Swappa Powers Park and the Richard A. Young Recreation Center, again, some softball, baseball upgrades, some type of safety fencing. And the big item on, and that facility too, is there are a lot of discussion on replacing either tennis courts or with some type of combination of tennis and pickleball to help, you know, expand out those use, uses to the community. Pickleball is kind of an interesting thing because it is probably the fastest growing segment in recreation and development facilities that we've seen. I think the last number I saw that probably the pickleball membership across the country has grown to over nearly 5 million in a short period of time. So it is by far one of the fastest growing resources that we've seen. There's, there was some discussion in the old plan about acquiring some parcels adjacent to the Swappa Powers. And then I think all the parks also talk about, you know, the potential addition of security cameras. Again, to try to help minimize any safety and vandalism issues in the park. The Bruin Park Senior Center, again, a lot of communities have a lot of discussion on more passive uses like walking paths that can be used for exercise. And also ADA structure upgrades again. And we're seeing so much change in the last, the last five to seven years on play structures and really trying to target the, you know, ages five and under and the ages six to 12, because they are kind of two unique age groups. Daily Park, some of the projects identified included replacing some of the existing lighting with LED lighting, adding security cameras. Heather Park was identified for replacement of the two tennis courts and the basketball court, some additional shade trees, additional security cameras, you know, ADA improvements as far as connecting walkways. And then can lock install LED lighting and security cameras. Again, so it's kind of a recurring theme there. Whittle Park, again, expand playground equipment again to target some of those different age groups, you know, between the six to 12 and the five and under. And also there's, I think, a lot of the playgrounds, there's been some discussion about the surface material and looking at are there opportunities to create more universally accessible surfaces as opposed to just the bark fiber, fiber mulch that is used in a lot of playgrounds that would there be an opportunity and say one or two of the facilities to look at more of a port and place surface that would allow a little more accessibility. And the last park on the list was Warren Valley Golf Course. Since this was kind of a recent addition from the last, last plan to this plan, now that's come under city control. And there's been some discussion about evaluating the existing parking areas. You know, how much of those existing park, parking areas are necessary for golf course and event operations? And is there possibility to repurpose some of those areas for some type of music kind of event space, if you will? And then looking at some type of music pavilion, walking paths, utilities to service, you know, those type of events. And as well as expanding some other potential uses at that facility for play structure and also outdoor exercise and fitness equipment. Some of those special system-wide initiatives that I talked about earlier were the facilities, some renovations at the Eaton Center and as well as the potential for the Canfield Community Center replacement were, have been discussed. And other general items like just Gemmer Park Promotion, community involvement and fundraising, barrier-free accessibility, just overall design improvements is, is different elements reach their life cycle and safety, park programming and land acquisition. Land acquisition, just overall, even with the increase in population. The, the Warren Valley Golf Course added 250 acres to the city's overall inventory. And so if you look at the overall numbers, the, the city does have a small surplus of park land, if you will. But again, the golf course is, you know, a big share of, of that acreage. And the plan does address, you know, in, in just general goals and objectives that if there are ever targets of opportunity in areas that, of the, of the neighborhoods that may be lacking in, in some of those small little neighborhood parks, to definitely take advantage and always look at expanding some of those, some of those park sites into, into those growth areas. As I mentioned, the back section of the plan talks about the rationale. And it also goes through and itemizes a five-year capital improvements program on what some of these costs may be. But again, I'd like to remind everybody that this is really just a guide for future projects. It's kind of an advisory snapshot and it's really just a starting point. We were talking earlier about like the Canfield Community Center, really what that may be as far as that's a really a totally separate feasibility study to really fine tune what that number might be. But at least we wanted to identify it in this plan and we did put a placeholder budget number in there. So at least it gets it on everyone's radar. And also that this, this, the next five slides are really dealing with year one through five. They're not intended to be a rigid list, but it's, it's meant to be fluid. Even from the DNR's perspective, it's not, it's not necessarily critical if, if, you know, as far as year one to year five, it just is something identified in the plan. Was there discussion on it? Then because they understand that things are going to move and there's going to be targets of opportunity that you need to be flexible. And also the biggest thing is the last statement is it needs to be dependent on financial feasibility. We don't expect everything to be done in the year one or year five. You know, it's just, here is just a general blueprint on how to move forward and, and improve some facilities. So, you know, if I always tell communities, if you can, if you can do a couple of things really every year on your list and just chip away at your list, you're actually doing very well. So again, don't, don't be disheartened by the size of the list. But I think it's, its ultimate goal is to really promote progress and promote things moving forward. This list also ties back to the list for the individual parks that were discussed earlier. But again, Canfield Community Center between, these were some of the projects that were listed as priorities, but updating the ball field lighting to LED, installing some type of walking track, walking path and resurfacing and reconstructing some of the parking lots. That those projects, you know, came up to approximately just short of $360,000 in year one. The Warren Valley Golf Course, you know, the potentially some type of event space amphitheater pavilion, if you will. We, we targeted like a $300,000 price tag. Swappa Powers Park in the Young Center renovate the kitchen and looks like some repair of some of the bathrooms in the facility were necessary. And those are, you know, again, to be determined. And that would be one of those things that again, could, needs additional study on its own. Because again, it's a lot of internal construction and, and those costs are, have been really fluctuating lately. Van Houten Park about resurfacing and reconstructing portions of the parking areas there. And also upgrading the playground area with new ADA surfacing and a new playground. Many of those wooden play structures that were built in the 90s or across Michigan. And the one thing that they're starting to see in many of them is the arsenic content and the wood preserve, preservatives have created an issue where a lot of communities are looking at, starting to phase those out. So again, that's why this was, was targeted as a priority. And then Parkland Park again, self locking gates and some type of security cameras at least in the, in the, in the first year one of the CIP. Year two of CIP again, Swappa, Swappa Powers Park, looking at pickleball courts, tennis courts, and also again, a fencing to help to help create a barrier there. The Eaton Senior Center again, in year two, new replace the pavilion in the courtyard and also some additional replacement of concrete in the courtyard. Potentially a $90,000 project. Whittle Park, again, new playscape there, some ground cover landscaping, other stabilization. 85,000. Daily Park, again, upgrade lighting to LED, 75,000. And the Canfield Community Center, resurface the west parking lot. It's kind of a year two as opposed to the main, the main, the main parking lot and the, we call it the horseshoe drive, if you will. I know Central Park Drive, but this was listed as a, you know, potentially second year project to, to balance out the that park. And so again, an overall price tag of 627,000 in year two. Parkland Park, again, the, the first item in that original list was the redesign of the sliding hill, again, trying to expand it to winter use as well as some additional lighting, the heating unit. And also a new playscape. And so Parkland Park, 230,000. Bearwin Park, just again, new playscape. So very, you know, typical theme and I think a lot of the parks is start to upgrade some of the player is. And Houten Park, the dog fencing, looking at potentially there as well. Millan Park was one that was a carryover from the old rec plan. It was, there was some talk of some acquisition potentially from that. So that's, you know, at least to keep it on people's radar, that was left in, in this plan. And Heather Lane Park, which I don't know if you had a chance to get up to Heather Lane. Really the tennis courts and the basketball goals have really reached the end of their life cycle use. And so again, as well as constructing some ADA parking at that facility. Year four, Swappa Powers again, again, the, that potential acquisition, again, just to try to keep it on people's radar. For the two properties, again, to put a placeholder in there. Canfield Community Center, Central Park. Discussions on at some point in time, those tennis courts are going to be resurfaced with color coding. 175,000. Kenlock Park, new jogging, walking trail, 100,000. If McMillan Park ever, acquisition ever moves forward, that's a small playscape there is listed. Parkland Park, additional lighting, renovating soccer fields and again, replacing those and resurfacing those two tennis courts. And Whittle Park, again, another small playscape. Year five, Swappa Powers. Again, looking at potentially is there the room for another splash pad in the community and also an outdoor fitness court, courts. Canfield Community Center, that's the one I guess I wanted to again, get on your radar and get on your list. Is really a, a good opportunity for a total feasibility study because our rule of thumb for indoor recreational facility right now is currently around $300 a square foot. So if you're looking at a Right now is currently around three hundred dollars a square foot. So if you're looking at a ninety thousand square foot type of facility. You know, an indoor recreational facility in the next decade could easily top, you know, tens of millions of dollars, so. Again, just getting that to where there's potentially some more discussion on it. And again, to to keep it on people's radar. Again, Kenlock Park, new playscape and Parkland Park looking at again, is there another opportunity for. Another small music or type of performance stage in Parkland Park. Then also, you know, the the current park, if Kim can chime in on this too, is currently a lease with the county. And at some point in time with the city want to look at just taking that from a lease to some type of acquisition, at least to. Get that thought in people's minds, it was just added to the list. So again, a fairly substantial list right now, so. That's kind of a quick summary of of, I guess, the meat. If you will, of the plan as far as the backend. And I guess I'd like to open it up now for. Just general questions. And I I should add that again. We can make this PowerPoint available just to give everybody a quick overview and and I know that the the. The recreation plan draft has been updated on the city website to the link, so again. If anybody wants a a direct email of a P D F version of the plan itself and this presentation. Just let Kim know and I'll make sure that we get it out to people for further further thought.
The master plan that's up right now that we just uploaded today is actually our second draft. There will be probably a couple more drafts following this one, just so that everybody knows. And we definitely will be taking. Anybody's ideas or suggestions for any of the parks. And then, yeah, I don't know if Rick mentioned this earlier, but nothing is written in stone. And we definitely, even after this master plan is submitted, we can definitely submit. A any types of addendums to the D N R to be able to add to our master plan. The first year, the the five year plan is first year, I looked at what we needed to really do in the city. And what really needs to be done quickly and. Actually badly and got those in as quick as we can and. As funds are available, we can get some of these projects done. We have started working on a couple of them. He mentioned the Richard A Young Kitchen and the Richard A Young Guest Rooms, Guest Restrooms. We have actually went out to bid for those and we're actually still waiting for the wood for the cabinets. So they are on back order, but those projects are in, but they won't be completed till twenty two. That's why they're in the plan, so some of the other things have actually been put on. My radar, so to speak, because these are things that need to be done. If any of you have been out to Van Houten Park. The parking lot is all little crumbles and it's just in really, really poor shape. There's a lot of the the horseshoe drive at Canfield Center is really in bad shape. The sidewalk in front of Canfield Center, so there's all kinds of things that. Need upgraded repaired and and fixed and if we can bring these up to where they should be, I think that. Dearborn Heights will be a much, much nicer place for people to live, work and play and. I'm excited to getting our city up to where it should be, so it it definitely is going to be a challenge because the challenge is going to be. Getting the funds, the he was talking about the new community center to replace the Canfield Committee Community Center. When we went out last time for it and it was when Granholm was governor. The price came in at thirteen million. So obviously prices have changed and they're a lot higher. Now, I I guess Rick was telling me earlier, it's three hundred dollars a square foot for for building and then you're lucky if you can get the staff to. To build the building and and also you lucky if you can get the materials, so we're in a whole new day and age now, so. Um, I do have a question for the mayor. Can we like unmute the mayor because I have a question. Hi Mayor.
Real quick for all of us attending virtually, I just want to remind everybody that you have to state your. County, city, township or village and the state where you're speaking from.
Yeah, I I had mentioned you earlier and I and I, you know, kind of like dumb on this property. Is there anything that we can do with the incinerator property to have a large park in the south end or? Is that something that is is not a possibility? I know that when we get land and water trust fund money. We in the past or or cities in the past have used it to clean places up, but I just wondered if that was a possibility.
Well. So I guess, yeah, I'm in Dearborn Heights, Michigan at the City Hall. So with that, so that that property is we're putting it on hold and the reason why is the Army Corps of Engineers been looking at it for years. So because of the E course Creek issue. And so we don't want to use it for anything at this point, you know, till we figure out, you know, what we got to do with the E course Creek. Because if we do anything with that, you know, and that's going to cause big issues for the people around that E course Creek, then you know. That's going to be a huge problem, so let's put a put a hold on the thought with the incendiary property for the time being. Till we figure out what the Army Corps of Engineers want to do. But if they do anything with that property, from my understanding, it's going to be like in the hundreds, at least a hundred to two hundred million dollars. To do anything with that, but you know, funding is going to be an issue, but there might be a cheaper remedy for the E course Creek. But right now, we're still, it's still in the thought process. With our congressional delegates and with FEMA and the state and the county.
And and the reason that I ask is is right now, we're actually, even though Rick mentioned we're. Much better off than our our amount of park property, we're still. Under on the actual park property that we can use for. Other things that, you know, because it's just basically a golf course and a lot of people have been asking that, you know, can't you offer this event or that event in the south end? We're very limited in our property and I know that I've been receiving emails that they've increased the amount of money for land and water. Brand funding, so I was just curious about that.
So I I know Mr. Day wants to speak, but when we complete the master plan, obviously we missed. Some opportunities, you know, with grants in the past because the master plan. But that's been the past, so that's why we have to get this master plan up 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 to date and signed off. So we can pursue grants and I know from all the meetings that I've been attending for the last year, this past year. With the county, the state and federal level. They're encouraging people obviously to be outdoors and I think they got to put investments on people to do outdoors things. So they might be. Open to. Giving grants to cities that put, you know, money into the infrastructure like parks and those kind of things. So I will pursue, I keep pursuing that with with our congressional state and Wayne and the county. To see if there's anything, but you know, as of right now. We can't really, there's nothing going on at this point, you know, till we get the master plan up, signed off, you know, by the council and the residents and. Also. We'll see if early in the year, you know, what what new. You know, like they have the infrastructure bill, you know, that's that's the past and there's, you know, the ARPA money that obviously that passed. So there might be other other things coming up down the down the line, but we I don't know as of right now, but we'll. We'll keep exploring the options. I know Mr. He was patiently waiting.
Yeah, are you patiently waiting? I can't hear you.
He's muted.
Oh, he's muted. Ali wants to speak. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Cool. All right, well, first, Rick, I just wanted to say that. Done a great job. I'm actually following on the website. I'm looking at the the recreation master plan. I just want to point one thing, I do not call it a a master plan for very good reasons. We can't have departmental master plans. We're working on the citywide master plan. You are a piece of a city plan, not an entire master plan and there's there are good reasons for that. Many of the items you mentioned have are being looked at as part of the city's capital improvement master plan. We wanted to update our our vision, including land use, by the way, not just, you know, parks and rocks. But the overall because of, well, there are no unlimited resources, as you know, so we all have. To live within, we have to prioritize our needs and that will include things like parks and racks, police. You know, fire and many other, all the departments in the city. So I would stick to the five year recreational plan because I do want you to be able to go to the D N R and obtain funds. For for all the projects that we agreed to, so we will limit our of all the recommendations you made. And there were some great recommendations on park per park basis, but don't get into things like. You know, land use commitment or future land use because that is connected to the overall city need. So we're looking at things that will include, Kim mentioned, you know, some property. That we actually wanted to look at as part of what we what we what the city needs on the on the capital side. So one, one of the priorities that we told ARPA about would be the storm water management. And that will have a large as well as smaller projects, so we're working on updating our standards. So future construction will have, you know, the the finger drains on the catch basins and permeable pavements and all that good stuff. But on the general, the large scale, we're looking at regional as well as statewide to capture a storm water. And the in the basins that we are, you know, part of, so it would be part of the. You know, watersheds of the Rouge or the E course Creek and that is on our radar screen. So again, I would say that this is at best a five year recreational plan and if we put our. Just keep in mind that in January, we'll be coming out on the street for a project to do the update the city's master plan. And I want this to be to seamlessly be part of that. Not in lieu of, but apart, so they need to be integrated and they also need to be, unfortunately, I wish I was, we had. Version of our city capital plan because that will be the perfect time to try to integrate the two together, but since we don't. We may, we may need to amend or try to merge the two or make it part of, so you may have to, you know. Amend or do some changes. That that's the main, that's the main comment I have and there will be a a lot of the what the mayor indicated, you know, there were a lot of projects that were. Submitted to the city or asked for us to evaluate them, you know, from the Corps of Engineers, from the feds, the county, the state. But we wanted to do what's best for us, so we were going to take our limited resources and then put them where they where they. Fit bus, so a capital program is underway, will be coming out and that five year will have a C I P program. And that program will take into account your parks massively.
Mr. Deb, can you tell us what your location is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dearborn, Michigan, USA. Sorry. Does that make sense, Kim?
Yeah, it it does. You were saying more of. Just calling it Parks and Recreation Plan and and the thing of it is, we do have to title it a master plan because that's what the D N R calls it, right, Rick?
I it, the technical title, it's just on even on the, it's a five year Parks and Recreation Plan.
Okay, all right, so we don't have to use the word master.
Don't have to use the word master.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure. And then in regards to your comments in regards to us acquiring property for Parks and Recreation. The one thing that I I I see in that and I understand that when you're talking about like the incinerator property, of course. We won't include that, that was just a question I I had because I didn't know if that was a possibility because I know that's probably the only large piece of property left in the south then. But if we don't have. You know, the possibilities that we might do this or do that in as far as like acquiring Parkland Park. We wouldn't be able to do it if it's not not in our master plan, we wouldn't be able to use land and water money to do it that.
Well, I'll give you an example, Kim, a part of what we're looking for, you know, we were talking about the storm water management. Part of what we're looking for is retention as opposed to, you know, retention or detention. Well, while there there are some great examples of of storm water management retention plans being incorporated into. A park like environment, so this is again, I can't say for sure what is coming out until we actually look. And find out, so so next year, we will be having a storm water simulation, a program, a simulation. Study that will show me the key points within the city that require, that will give me the most, you know, benefit for. To reduce my storm water or to be able to manage it, so that will be the time to say, come back and say, look, you know, we have a good location around. E course Creek or or, you know, or maybe the Warren Valley, I don't know, I just need to to do that and say, look. Maybe we'll be able to do this and create a park like environment, you know, Crosswind Marsh was a great example, it's still. It's a wonderful park, that is an example of how you manage storm water system, so I mean, a lot of these things can can merge and be done. Together.
Yes, yeah, and and I understand that, I just don't want to limit ourselves if we don't put something in the plan. In as far as being able to get it done.
Well, I I think there's a, there's enough in the general goals and objectives that always says, you know, there if there are. Unique opportunities where you can acquire property for recreational use or, you know, some type of blended use. That you should explore those opportunities. The only thing I would caution you is whenever talking about changing of land use. If you ever acquire a property and it's designated as recreational type property. You cannot divest yourself of that property because that is virtually the ultimate no-no. They look, you know, the D N R and funding agencies look at it as a taking of park property. A good example of that, we had to say, we had a community that bought, we didn't, we didn't. Were part of the process, but they bought park property. And somebody had an idea of, would it be a good idea if we put a community well on that park property? Well, the D N R viewed it as you were taking recreational value away. So that's why you've got to do, you've got to look at designation of property with a very careful eye and do it very strategically. But I think there are some opportunities there that you can do both, especially in the area of storm water management and recreational type of activities. But again, make sure that's very strategic on how you approach it.
Kind of similar to the parking lot that we made at Richard A Young with the rain gardens, right? Yeah, and that was a good thing. I mean, that parking lot is held up forever, it seems like compared to the others. So. Right, does anyone else have any comments, questions, additions? If not, I know you've got a council meeting coming up very quickly. So again, you can make. Written. Letters telling us anything else that you would like to see added and get those to us within the week and a half. I'd like to thank Rick and I'd like to thank everybody for attending. I think we're we're all good. Thank you.